Okay, good afternoon. Planning Commission is now in session. Ms. Rodriguez, would you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Schwartz, absent. Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan, absent. Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Present. Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
Okay, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not, Chair Thompson.
Any announcements?
We have no announcements.
Okay. Comments from the public on items not on today's agenda. Do you have any other speaker slips for items not on the agenda?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll close that and move on to our first item, which is the Cabrillo Boulevard Bath House. Allison, are you going to give the staff report?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Allison Debusk, project planner for the city. This is a project located at 1118 East Cabrillo Boulevard, and as mentioned, it is the Cabrillo Bath House and Pavilion. The project involves improvements to the building and surrounding area to enhance public access and community use, address failing building systems, including structural, mechanical, and plumbing, and meet current ADA requirements. Here we have an aerial view of the project site. The bath house is located within East Beach, just south of Cabrillo Boulevard, and it's between Milpas Street and Ninos Drive. Here is a bird's eye view of the building looking towards the north. And here are some photographs of the existing structure. On the upper left-hand corner is a view of the front of the building, looking south from Cabrillo Boulevard. Down at the bottom here, we have a view of the rear of the building, looking north from the beach. And here's a close-up of the enclosed terrace and the portico on the ground level. In the upper right-hand corner is a picture of the stoa, which is a covered walkway located just east of the pavilion building. This is the site plan for the project. And as I said earlier, the project includes upgrades to the existing building and perimeter, including structural and mechanical improvements. Some of the specific changes that would be most visible include grading, drainage, landscaping, and access improvements, parking lot improvements to address accessibility, and also for storm water management compliance, a new trash enclosure, new equipment enclosure, new bicycle parking, new shower area, alterations to the portico promenade area, a new boardwalk that's eight feet in width and would connect the promenade to the beach, alterations to the stoa, including repairs and also removing the screen wall on the north side, a new elevator, and alterations to the terrace. On this slide, if you can see the blue dashed line, that indicates the required 10-foot front setback. The project does include some improvements that are located within this setback area, and therefore, the project requires a front setback modification. The project also requires a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. Part of staff's review of the project included environmental review. The project site is sensitive in that it's located right on the beach, and the building has also been determined to be historic and is a city's structure of merit. Reports were prepared to analyze historic resources, archaeological resources, biological resources, tree removal, sea level rise, and geotechnical issues associated with the project. Each of these reports concluded that the project would not have significant impacts on the listed resource, and therefore, staff determined that the project was categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines. And that section allows for maintenance and alterations to existing structures where there is negligible or no expansion of use. As I said previously, one of the approvals required for the project from the Planning Commission is a front setback modification. The project site has a required setback of 10 feet, and existing development currently encroaches into this setback. The project would include development such as stairs, ramps, and the trash enclosure that are also within this 10-foot setback area. The finding that the Planning Commission must make in order to approve a modification is that the modification is consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance and is necessary to secure an appropriate improvement on the lot and prevent unreasonable hardship. Staff finds that the proposed encroachments are minor in nature and are necessary for the project, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the setback modification. The project also requires a coastal development permit. The findings that the Planning Commission must make in order to approve a coastal development permit are that the project is consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act, and the project is consistent with all applicable policies of the city's LCP, all applicable implementing guidelines, and all applicable provisions of the code. The Cabrillo Bath House and Pavilion is specifically identified in the city's LCP, and it is identified as being the focal point of activity at East Beach. The LCP notes that it houses a snack bar, beach equipment rental, public bathroom -- excuse me, public bathhouse, and arts center. As identified in the city's LCP, the coastal issues most applicable to the project and its location are public access, recreation, visitor-serving uses, ocean-dependent uses, visual resources, water and marine resources, hazards, and public services, specifically circulation and parking. Staff has reviewed each of these issues and the applicable policies related to them, and finds that the project is not only consistent with these policies, but represents an improvement specifically related to public access, recreation, visitor-serving uses, and circulation. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the modification and coastal development permit, making the findings outlined in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A of the staff report. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Chair Thompson, members of the Planning Commission, Jill Zachary. I'm the acting Parks and Recreation Director. I have some slides that I'd like to go through for you. I'd also like to acknowledge that our design team, Joe Wilcox and Don Zimer, are here from KBZ Architects, and then other staff from the city staff team, including Rich Hanna, Justin Van Mullum, and Mike Wilsher are here, in case you have questions of the project. There we go. So first of all, I'd just like to let the commission know this project was started in 2011 when the RDA still existed. We did a building systems analysis and initiated the development of a business plan. The project was stopped at the end of 2011 when redevelopment agencies were dissolved, but it was restarted again in January 2014 as a high-priority project for the city council, the Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Parks and Recreation Department. The building itself is a key community recreation facility, and it is an anchor for public access, public coastal access at East Beach. Our project objectives include maintaining the historic integrity of the building, addressing the building systems, both structural -- systems as well as structural and seismic considerations. Access is a key consideration. Renovating the interior, addressing site safety concerns and needs, enhancing our programming, and expanding community use. We also have a goal of achieving lead silver. That's more of a design issue. The history of the pavilion, very briefly. It was constructed in 1926, and it was gifted to the city in 1927 by David Gray for the intended purposes of park use and public recreation. Since that time, it has served that purpose for the community, both interior and exterior, for dancing, arts classes, games, socials, community events, public meetings, conferences, beach activities, the list goes on. As a result, it's clearly a priority of our department to move this project forward and to present it to you today. Very quickly, I wanted to briefly go through some slides, and I'll do this very quickly, of some of the visuals that we'd like to share that inspired us for the design and our approach today. Recreation shows you from the early days, tees and talks that occurred inside, dancing of various forms, depending on the decade. It has evolved. As a community and social center, it's always played a key role in Santa Barbara. At the same time, in order to play those key roles, it's been altered over time. In fact, it's gone through a series of alterations, probably since at least 1942, both at the exterior to deal with access and public use, and then interior. The photos in the top of the slide show you essentially what the pavilion floor looked like when the building first opened, and it was available in three -- two different rooms. And then downstairs, on the far left, show you what it looked like in the '70s, and then what the renovation in the 1980s brought to the pavilion. So as the building has changed over time and its use has evolved for community needs, we have had to change it. We're at the point today where once again faced with -- we have a building that's almost 90 years old. It hasn't had a major exterior/internal renovation for a long time. It's not used to the extent that it could be for the community, and it has a great opportunity to serve public access and recreation for many decades to come. Very briefly, to get to today's presentation, as you can see, we did a lot of building and site research. We spent a significant amount of time on our design and technical studies. We believe that we have a project that's probably 70% designed and ready to go today. We've been to the Historic Landmarks Commission on four occasions to address design issues. We've also been to the Parks and Recreation Commission on a number of occasions, and it is a high-priority project for the commission. And then, community outreach has been a key factor in our efforts, both initially as the business plan was developed, but then also through two open houses, a fact sheet, web information, stakeholder meetings, and ongoing email updates. And then lastly, the city council has been updated on a regular basis, either through contract awards or status reports on the project. I'd like to give you a few visuals of how we anticipate that the renovated facility will look like. With a focus on access, our proposed project will make the building fully accessible to today's standards. That's something that's a key objective since it is a community-use building. For the front of the building, the pavilion level, you can see on the left-hand side how we will have a ramp up to the entry terrace and an enlarged terrace to enter. At the public promenade, essentially what it looks like today, with some exceptions, we'll improve access on the east and west wing of the building so that there is a way to ramp up to the promenade floor, the portico floor, while still maintaining the public access promenade. So that's 16 -- that would be 16 feet wide. Part of our project includes extending out the portico to the original design from 1926, so that would be an additional eight feet, so that the actual footprint of the building does not change. The landscape plan and sort of the site plan really give you a sense of how the site will change. It's the same footprint that we have today, and the key focus here is access. If I could have Justin use the mouse to show you how that access will be achieved. So from the east -- from the west parking lot, we currently have a walkway that heads up to the pavilion floor. That will be redesigned and reconstructed to meet today's accessibility standards. Once individuals enter the public sidewalk, they'll travel around to the east side of the building in order to enter to an enlarged entry terrace. The terrace itself will be about three times as large as it is today. Part of the reason why we're requesting a front setback modification. And then, as you go down to the promenade level, you can see we have a walkway similar to what we have today leading to the promenade. And then on the west and east ends of the building, the aerials show where individuals will be able to get up, enter into the portico level, whether it's currently the access is -- does not meet today's standards. Most of the landscaping is on the north side of the building where the current landscaping is today. Other site improvements include parking on either side of the building, as well as improved access to the beach. We're proposing to put in an entry ramp on the east side of the building, and then improved access to the beach on both sides. This visual gives you a sense of what that would look like. It's becoming increasingly popular in coastal communities to improve access to the beach using a modular deck system that can be removable. We took inspiration for this from the Santa Monica Community Beach House when they renovated that facility, and it's something that's going in throughout Southern California. It's another opportunity for us to provide access to the beach in this location. Very quickly, the interior floor plan, as you can see, is very similar to what we have today. A key objective of our project is to open the building for public use. As the pavilion changed over time, the original tea room became a conference room, staff offices, and essentially, a hallway into the special event room. Our plan includes removing those walls and recreating the tea room and providing an enhanced lobby. The special event room is essentially the same size it is today. And then the terrace enclosure, which faces the beach side, we're proposing to renovate and reconstruct, but construct in a slightly smaller fashion so we're able to reveal the original windows on the east and west side of the terrace, yet still maintain the function of that terrace, which is important to the operation of the building and the use of it as a meeting center, a community center, a place for social events. Within the building, we are renovating other aspects of it, including the restrooms and the warming kitchen. Our project I mentioned provides full access. And if we could show you where the elevator will come up from the first floor. One of the challenges we face today is it operates kind of like two buildings, and we want to integrate the building so there can be more activity between the two floors. So the elevator will be located on the east northeast corner of the building. At the bath house level, that is essentially our recreation area. And when it was first designed, it was intended as a destination to go rent a bathing suit, change, and go out and enjoy the beach. Our shower/locker facilities are significantly oversized for today's uses, and the areas that we've converted for public uses haven't been updated since the '70s. So our proposed plan for the lower area is maintaining those shower and locker facilities, but putting them on the west side of the building, maintaining the existing lobby, and then opening up -- and if we could show with the mouse, thank you -- the back area, which is currently staff offices and a gym, to a multipurpose room. We're proposing that the facility on the lower floor will have three to four multipurpose rooms. The building itself currently houses a restaurant concession, and we're proposing to maintain that in the renovated facility, essentially in the same configuration that it is today, with the idea that we'll have improved dining area. We mentioned also the renovation to the stoa. The stoa is adjacent to the playground that's on the beach here, and it's an area where, in addition to the need to renovate it since it's in poor condition, it's one of the areas where we have site safety concerns. We have children using the playground, and we often have individuals hanging out and inhabiting that area that prohibit public use. Our proposal to remove the middle walls between the columns that you can see essentially will help reduce that and increase visibility to the beach and the playground. Coastal hazards and sea level rise is a topic that's becoming of increasing concern to communities throughout coastal California, in fact, any coastal community throughout the United States and elsewhere in the world. So as part of this project, we evaluated the vulnerability of the site to both sea level rise and coastal hazards, and we have a proposed approach. Interim solutions approaches is part of the project, and then longer-term solutions. And those solutions include, first and foremost, floodproofing the building. We do have to do a significant amount of site work and excavation in order to do that, and also to address the accessibility considerations. So that will be done as part of the project and proposed. We also are proposing and have initiated the design of this study already, monitoring the beach profile as it changes over time, because that's one of the areas that the city and many communities aren't well -- haven't been well documenting, is how is the beach changing? Ultimately, if the building is affected by sea level rise and coastal events, we've determined that we can first implement soft solutions such as a berm, a winter berm system, that would protect the building. Other areas of the site might be periodically inundated in the case of a storm event. Sometimes, a high rain event causes that to occur today, and we feel like the facility can withstand that. The city also has a beach nourishment program because it does dredge its harbor twice a year, and that already supports the maintenance of East Beach and the protection of land. We would be maintaining that since that's a city-wide initiative, and then looking for opportunities to enhance beach nourishment when necessary. As we look forward, it could be 20, 30, 40, 50 years before we have to further address this issue, which the department would do under a separate coastal development permit process. So as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we believe we are essentially close to 70% with our design. We spend a lot of time getting to it today to make sure we had a viable project that the city could move forward with. With approval of the coastal development permit, we'd move immediately into final design and construction documents. We also would be working further on our project fundraising, our business plan development, and then maintaining our community outreach initiatives. We have our total estimated project costs of just over $12 million, and that will be revised as we finish our design work. The city has dedicated $9.1 million in the former RDA bond funds for this project. And then with this fiscal year, city council approved half a million of general fund resources toward the project. So as you can see, we're very close to meeting the total funding that we need, and we anticipate that we'll be able to use the city's commitment to leverage outside sources. That concludes the remarks on this project. We do have a number of other slides which have elevations and other views, as well as photographs that give you more view of the site if you have questions related to that.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Debusk, any other staff report?
No additional comments.
Okay, before we go to public speakers, does anyone have questions for staff? Mr. Higgins.
Yeah, for staff, what was the outreach to the tenants of the property, restaurant, you know, lifeguard, junior guard folks, major operators out there? And maybe just characterize that, feedback if you could.
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Higgins. In 2011, when we started our business plan effort, we had a stakeholder process, which included current tenants, current users. We held focus groups to talk about what we like and what we don't like about the building, what we'd like to see, and where we wanted to go. What we heard at that time is, we like a lot of what's great -- we like a lot about what goes on, but just make it a lot better. We'd like to do more activities, more recreation here. When we restarted the project, we informed that stakeholder group, and then we held our first community open house a year ago in September. We took that opportunity. We had about 100 people attending the open house, and we talked about the project objectives. We provided information about the project. We posted it on our website. We currently have a restaurant concession that's a tenant, and we've met with them on a number of occasions to keep them up to date on where we are with the project. Our ultimate first step, ultimate goal, was to get to the point where we thought we had a project that could be permitted. And now, we get to -- we would be able to move into looking ahead to the design and then what happens once the facility's open.
So the folks that use the building are generally happy with where this is headed? Is that fair?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Higgins, that's our understanding that there's full support for the project.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. A question from Ms. Zachary. Thank you. I may have missed it, but the current low wall that is at the edge of the walkway and the sand, what's the plans for that wall?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Campanella, we plan to maintain that wall, reconstruct it. It serves a purpose, a couple of things. One, it prevents a lot of sand from coming onto the promenade. That 16-foot-wide promenade is also for fire and safety access, and it's used by folks that use the facility. So it's a place to drop your things if you're going to go for a swim. When we have our summer camps or sporting events there, it's used, and people sit on it and enjoy being at the beach.
Second question, if I can. I think the walkway is a great idea to get, you know, people with disabilities out to enjoy the beach as well. The -- you say the sections can be removed. During normal beach maintenance and, you know, the equipment that moves around, will it be picked up? Or does it have to be reassembled after you're doing maintenance on the beach? Or does the equipment move around it somewhere down by the coast?
Chair Thompson, Commissioner Campanella, no, vehicles can actually travel over. It's designed to be able to withstand that.
Oh, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have some -- a couple of questions for Ms. Debusk. On page two of nine of the draft conditions, you talk about best management practice training for the restaurant employees. What about the rest of the people that are going to be using that building? City employees, so forth?
Chair Thompson, the intent of that condition is specifically related to restaurant uses, things such as grease management and all the additional trash associated specifically with a restaurant. It's actually a standard condition that we apply to any restaurant or hotel. It is something that could be applied more broadly to the entire building, but we found that the hotels and restaurants are the ones that have the biggest demand for it.
Well, the way it reads right now, it doesn't focus on restaurant because it's talking about written conditions document. And so that might need to be clarified if it's only going to be applied to the restaurant. I have another question in the page 23 of 24 of the staff report applicant letter. It talks about dates for HLC reviews, and those dates are a little confusing because it talks about a review that's going to occur, will occur, but April or May of 2015. And it also talks about that they also received the most recent status update on November 19, 2015, which hasn't even occurred for another couple of months. So perhaps those dates could be fixed and clarified before this gets locked into the archives.
Chair Thompson, just to respond to that question, this letter was drafted in May from the Parks and Recreation Department, and so some of the dates we're looking forward. You are correct, there's a typo on that date in November. It should read 2014.
Okay, it was a little confusing when I was reading that. Okay, we have -- Commissioner Pujol has a question.
Thank you. And actually, one of my questions was just answered. It was on the dates. So the other question, the only other question I have right now is the access, the new accessible access to the beach. And I guess this would be from Ms. Zachary. How is horizontal access treated across that walkway? So if you're walking down to the beach, I get it. But if you're walking along the beach, but not on the sand, how do you get across that walkway? Is it flat, and you just cut across, or?
Chair Thompson and Commissioner Pujol, yes, that's my understanding. You should be able to cross right over it.
So there won't be any impediment of people wanting to walk horizontally along the beach? Is that -- yeah, okay. All right, thank you, that's it.
Okay, we have several public speakers. First is Joe Howell.
Welcome. Good afternoon, Chair Thompson and Commissioners. My name is Joe Howell, I'm a local attorney, and I'm here today on behalf of Francisco Aguilar, who's the owner-operator of East Beach Grill. As you saw in the photos, and I think you all probably have experienced, East Beach Grill is the restaurant, it's located at the east end of the Cabrillo Pavilion, and it faces East Beach. Mr. Aguilar is not here today, he's attended every single meeting we had. He's a very proud dad, dropping off his son, Francisco Jr., in San Francisco to start his freshman year of college. So he had his priorities straight. Francisco and I have attended, I think, every possible meeting relating to the project. Ms. Zachary mentioned the two informational meetings, one was upstairs in September of 14, one downstairs this August in the bathhouse. We've attended multiple historical landmarks meetings, the City Council update meeting, and probably most importantly, and Ms. Zachary mentioned this, Francisco and I have had several very productive meetings with the senior staff at Parks and Rec, Nancy Rapp prior to her retirement, Acting Director Zachary, and Recreation Programs Manager Rich Hannah. So we've really been kept informed, they've been good meetings. Francisco asked that I make two points. First, he is in full support of the renovation. We've watched he and I and others have watched the general plans become more specific, we've seen the concept drawings become more and more detailed. Francisco's eager to work with the staff, the architects, to make a great project. Secondly, he remains totally committed personally and financially to the continuation of East Beach Grill. This is really despite a disruption that's likely to happen, given the timing on his business. His view, he's ready to proceed with really two goals. One, maximize the opportunities that the renovated facility will, will offer. And second, this is very important, he and his staff of 24 employees are committed to continuing to serve the community at large, and his very loyal customers, some are here with us today, just as he's done for the last 31 years since East Beach Grill opened in March of 1984. So we look forward to working with the staff. I know this, this is a big step, Parks and Recreation has explained getting the entitlements will enable them to shift their focus, so we look forward to meeting with them, and Francisco looks forward to keeping the operation going for many more years. So those are the end of my remarks. I have one comment or answer I can give you on the, if you would like, Chair Thompson on the recycling and the current use and best practice, but I'm happy to do that.
No, my, my concern was that I didn't want to see the restaurant be singled out and picked on.
Got it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Leo, well, I can't quite read it, Leo D'Amico?
I'm just here to comment mostly on the question you asked about the locals and how we feel about it. We think it's a good idea, it's to redo it and make it as Ms. Zachary said, keep it the same, but make it, make it better. I think it's a great idea, but we're a little concerned about what making it better would actually do. I might want to say, I came to Santa Barbara in 1945, and I've made a big part of my life in college and living here, has been the East Beach Grill and the East Beach area. And pardon the glasses, but I left my other glasses in the car. After I grew up and finished college, I had to go in the military, and I came back here again for a while. And again, the East Beach Grill was always a place to go, and a place to have fun and play volleyball and take the kids, and now grandkids, to kind of enjoy it. One of the biggest factors there is the comfort of going there in the East Beach Grill as we know it today. I spent a lot of years here, and it's never been as great as it is now. I mean, the food's good, the prices are reasonable, the access to everything's fine, and the people are wonderful. And we're a little concerned that even though we want to keep it the same, and make it, make it better, that you people take a lot of consideration of who made it better. And I think that Francisco and his crew there, who are the same people all the time, I don't know how he keeps them there, but somehow make it a different place to come. And I know there's a process you have to go through in picking out who's gonna take over the restaurant, and will it be he or somebody else? But I think it's important that you realize that it is what it is, a lot because of him. And I don't think there's any restaurants or facilities in the East Beach area, almost until you get to State Street, that have been successful as far as being a restaurant to the people of Santa Barbara, the locals. The Miramar, or, not the Miramar, the Mar, the Marmani, which was there for years, has never had a successful place to go and eat. It does have a place to eat, but it's not like the East Beach Grill. Same with the Santa Barbara Inn, it's been up and down as far as the quality of dining. I don't think most of you go to those places, and at least I don't, I know that. And the Doubletree, same idea. They're nice for some loc, for some tourists to go and get a bite to eat while they stay in there, but the locals don't go there. We go to the East Beach Grill, and most people who stay there get on the bus and they go downtown to see Santa Barbara and the harbor and all that. So in that, checking out the process of what we're gonna, gonna do to make it, make it better and keep it the same, let's look at who really can, has done a lot to keep it what it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie Wiscombe?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Leslie Wiscombe, I'm chairman of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The Parks and Recreation Commission was extremely excited when the successor agency approved funding for over $9 million from the previous RDA bond funds for the design and renovation that will return the Cabrillo bathhouse and pavilion and its surrounds into a viable community recreation facility, and make it once again the crown jewel of East Cabrillo Boulevard. The Commission has had this project as a priority on their radar screen for many more years than I can count. In the Infrastructure Task Force Report annually as part of our budget cycles, and most recently in November 2014 and June 2015, for updates from the department on specific progress. In each instance, the renovation plans have met with unanimous enthusiasm and support from our Commissioners. We commend the department for all their thoughtful internal work, for collaboration with consultants, and for their outreach to the community that has gone into the proposed plans. The proposed renovations will improve public safety and accessibility, enhance recreational opportunities for residents and visitors alike, benefit ocean-dependent uses, and bring this historic structure and surrounding landscape back to crown jewel status. We'd also like to commend staff for their proactive approach in taking measures during renovation to protect the building from the impacts of potential future sea level rise, and outlining other specific steps that could be pursued if warranted. Obviously, staff will be seeking the shortfall in funds from other sources to fund this project, but needs your action today to move forward in order to secure additional funding. The Parks and Recreation Commission urges the Planning Commission to grant the front setback modification and approve the coastal development permit to allow this project to advance for the benefit of all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That's our last public speaker, unless anyone else wants to come up. So I'll close public testimony and bring it back to the Commission for comments and Mr. Higgins, why don't you start off? No comments? Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Obviously, this, this is a building that has provided essential services for, for the public for all its years, and it's also evident in the site visit that it badly needs some, some attention for the, simply for the eroding concrete around the rebar and so on. So that alone merits moving ahead with this. I can fully support this project and the modification.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think this is a wonderful resource that's being updated and upgraded to serve a lot of our, to serve our community in the future, and it's, it's pretty obvious that it's well-needed. I think the enhancing public access, meeting current ADA requirements, taking care of the building's systems, and really enhancing it for community use, has been a great project that they've brought forward. A lot of thought went into it, impact, environmental impact, and other considerations were made. And I, I think it's really going to be a, a great resource in the future. I have three children myself that went through junior lifeguards, so I'm used to what goes on down there and a lot of the activities, and I think it's, as the picture showed, it has been a great asset in the past and will continue to be so in the future. And I think the requests for setback modifications have a lot of good reasons for them, and have been looked at by staff for their recommending that we approve them. And so I'm wholeheartedly in support of the recommendations by staff for the project approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pujol, any comments?
I do, thank you. First of all, I just, I would like to say that after reading the materials, looking at the plan, the site visit, hearing the presentations and the comments as well, I, I am excited about the project too. I think it's, it's really something that we will all be very proud to see accomplished, and I, I want to express my appreciation to every person that worked on it, and from a Commissioner's perspective, from the thoroughness of the site visit, the application submittals, the Park and Recs Department letter, the drawings, the staff report, extremely thorough, and you know, the studies all lined up in place and answered just about every question I could imagine as well on the project, and I, I think it's gonna be just a fantastic renovation. Only one of the better projects I've, I've seen since I've been on the, the Commission. I do have a couple of, of comments, and I will clearly, of course, be supporting with enthusiasm the, the recommendation, but I do have a, a couple of comments. I found Ms. Zachary's letter to be very, very informative, and there are a couple of things that actually I learned through the letter that aren't mentioned, don't have mentioned in the, in the conditions, and I think would be a good idea to reference. So one is, there's information about construction timing in that letter that answered a lot of the questions about start and stop times, some of the detours and closures and whatnot. And I think it would be a good idea either in the project description, B1 condition, or as a separate condition to reference that information. I think there's more than one way you can probably do it, but whatever is the, is the simplest. And then also, there's reference to EV, electric vehicle readiness preparation that I don't see in the, in the conditions or the project description. There is reference to the bicycle parking, but I don't see the reference to the, and I believe it's the wiring that's going in with the project to prepare it for the eventual five stations or whatever. I think there should be a reference to that as well. And then finally, there is one last item, because I believe it is extremely important for these types of community uses, and, and, and we all have heard and experienced the facility as a, as a community resource, especially for locals, but also for others as well. And one of the key coastal policies, which I believe is 4.3, talks about lower-cost visitor-serving facilities. And to me, that's important enough of a mission, particularly for this city facility, that I think it should be referenced in the project description as well, and something along the lines of maintain, because it already does provide lower-cost services, but maintain its unique community and visitor-serving uses as part of the section of the condition B1 that talks about the purpose of the, of the project. So with those additions, I think it would be an absolutely complete and wonderful project. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm also in support of the project, and I would congratulate Ms. Zachary and her project team for doing a really thorough job of planning. The lack of questions and comments is pretty indicative of that. And I'd also like to add my kudos to Francisco and his restaurant team. East Beach Grill is a, is definitely a jewel in the, in the community. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the two items. Commissioner Pujol?
Yes, I would move to recommend approval of the project, including the, okay, maybe, maybe we should get that on the screen here, but I think it's in, including the modification to the setbacks, and the coastal development permit, and I think that's it on this one, yeah, and the coastal development permit. And I would like to add to my motion, the inclusion of reference to those three items that I brought up, one being the reference to maintaining lower-cost visitor-serving uses, the reference to the construction timing and scheduling in the Park and Recreation's letter, and also reference to the electric vehicle readiness component, and those would go under the project description in condition B1.
And including the findings?
And including the findings, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Campanella?
I would second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, it's approved. 10-day appeal period starting today, and good luck with moving forward. Next item on our agenda is the, the application for modifications to Laguna Channel. Get some seats swapped out over there. Okay, the Laguna Pump Station Facility Repair. Mr. Greer, are you gonna give the staff report?
Yes, Chair.
Okay. Welcome.
Yes, Chair Thompson. Steve Greer, environmental analyst for the City of Santa Barbara. I have with me Brian DeMore, Principal Engineer with the Public Works Department. The project, as you mentioned, is proposed repair.
Excuse me, hold it up. Commissioner Lodge?
I'm, I'm sorry, I wondered if Ms. Zachary at all wanted any of these sets of plans back?
Yeah, just give them to Ms. Rodriguez, and she'll make sure they get... Yeah, just give them to Ms. Rodriguez, and she'll make sure they get. Okay, sorry, Mr. Greer, go ahead.
My apologies.
No problem, Chair. So Chair Commissioners, again, the project is a proposal from the Public Works Department to make some repairs and maintenance to the Laguna Pump Station facility. The project includes a restoration plan to address the vegetation to be removed in the channel that has been determined to have some biological value. The project is located both in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone and the original permit jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The coastal plan and land use designation is Parks Open Space, and the zoning on the site is PR SD3. The boundary of the project between the original jurisdiction and the area that's considered appealable jurisdiction in the city's area is shown on this slide. The red area, of course, being the original jurisdiction, and the orange color being the, our appealable jurisdiction. Again, the project proposes limited repair and maintenance of the existing pump station facility and the associated tide gate structures, as well as a restoration plan to offset the vegetation removal from the channel. The discretionary actions required are a coastal development permit, CDP 2015 00015, and also a recommendation to the California Coastal Commission for the work proposed in the original permit jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The Public Works Department will be applying for a CDP, a coastal development permit, separate from what we're hearing today, directly to the Coastal Commission. And that requires the recommendation from the local jurisdiction for their processing of that CDP. This slide shows the detailed area of the pump station and tide gates, indicating the area that's within either jurisdiction. The line running down the middle shows that boundary between the original permit jurisdiction and the appealable jurisdiction. This gives a little overall view of the site, showing both the restoration area proposed and also the area of the pump station facilities. The project is being proposed in four phases. The first phase includes the, back up here a little bit. The first phase removes sedimentation and vegetation from the channel in front of the pump station. The Phase 1 includes also repairs to the channel wall. We'll install an additional debris rack and repair the existing wet well inlet screen and improve lighting and cameras for monitoring of those conditions. And we have on the inset to the right the actual location of the proposed debris rack. The Phase 2 of the project, this is now the area that's within the Coastal Commission's original permit jurisdiction. This would be a view looking from the Beachway Bridge at the backside of the tide gate structure, which includes, again, removal of sedimentation and vegetation in this area of the channel. This is looking at the backside of that tide gate structure. The tide gate that needs attention immediately is the one that's labeled number three. The inlet that requires work, shown in the lower-left corner, requires the new cover. There's another shot of that drain outlet structure. The Phase 3 is the proposed restoration plan that will extend the boundary of the area for the previously approved landscape restoration plans associated with the Cabrillo Bridge and the Mission Creek projects. The area that's identified is the area of the restoration. We have slides a little further in the presentation that indicate the areas of the Cabrillo Bridge and Mission Creek projects. This is a shot looking southwesterly. You can see the green dotted line for the approximate area for the restoration plan, basically sitting in front of the Skater Point facility. This is another shot, again, of the general area for the restoration. And then from the northeastern direction. Key point here is regardless of the configuration at the time, based on the changing contours of the area, it requires a three-to-one ratio of what has been identified in the channel of vegetation to restore. So that comes out to approximately 10,000 square feet of area. This, again, is a slide that shows both the projects that were described, the Cabrillo Bridge, the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project, and also the footprint of the Laguna Pump Station facility. Again, you see this outline is, depending on what's the actual conditions of the site, we know we'll have to be flexible in how we lay the actual plan out. But again, the intent is to make sure we have at least 10,000 square feet of restoration. Through the environmental review process, the city's MEA and other policies identified areas that needed additional evaluation were regarding cultural resources, biological resources, stormwater runoff, and potential flood impacts, and sea level rise as well. The area that, after doing the initial review of those issues, that required studies that were actually included in the applicant's proposal were regarding biological resource impacts, potential impacts to those resources. A biological survey was conducted onsite, sampling within the waterway, identification of plants, mapping of the area was completed. The biological survey concluded that with implementation of a restoration plan, standard BMPs, and the recommended minimization measures, all included as part of the project description, would further assure impacts to the biological resources in the area would be less than significant. So the project was determined to have no result in a significant project-specific environmental effect and had been determined to be exempt per Section 15301B of the SEQU The areas, the policies regarding local coastal plan and California Coastal Act applicable to the project have been determined to be consistent with those policies. The staff finding is that the project is, again, consistent with the California Coastal Act and the city's local coastal plan, and the recommendation is to approve the coastal development permit and recommend to the California Coastal Commission approval of the interior mechanical repairs to the tide gate, number three, replacement of the storm drain outlet, outflow cover, sedimentation, vegetation removal, and implementation of the restoration plan in the area within original permit jurisdiction. At this point, I'm going to allow Brian DeMore to talk more specifically about the project components and some history on the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Chair Thompson, planning commissioners. I think Steve did a pretty good job of summarizing the project. It's not terribly complicated, so I'm going to be pretty brief here. I did want to take a moment, though, to kind of describe this facility and how it serves our community. It's a pretty significant structure, and it's a critical piece of infrastructure to provide flood protection. And every chance I can get, it's nice to give a little pitch for that and for Public Works, the job that we do. So as you guys probably know, as well as most members, or more than most members of the community, this area drains a very low-lying part of town that was, a lot of it was filled in after the major earthquake in the 1920s. And it's not surprising that it was a low-lying area when you look at the names of some of the streets, like Laguna. I think Olive Street used to be called Canal Street, and even Salsa Pues, I think, has a name that would refer to getting out of there, if you can, I think is what it means. So it's a very low-lying area, and it's very urbanized. So after it was, after that area was filled in after the earthquake, it became attractive to develop and to put homes and businesses and industry there. And so as it developed, then the need to get the water out of there became more needed. And so in the 19, in 1939 was the first pump station at the Laguna Channel. And I'm sure, I'm sure after that and post-war era, there was more development that happened in that area. There was a need to further expand that pump station, which happened in the 1960s. So it's a fairly old piece of infrastructure. It hasn't changed too much since the 1960s. We have done some work down there where we've put new engines in and new pumps in to try to get more capacity. But right now, what we're proposing to do is really just to maintain what we have. There's talk right now in the news about this being an El Nino year, and there hasn't been a lot of maintenance done to that channel over the last five to 10 years, and we're concerned that the amount of vegetation and sediment that's in there could cause some real problems if we have a big event down there. So we want to clean it out, hopefully in the next month, to be ahead of those big storm events. So, yeah, we're recommending that you approve the CDP as well as the recommendation to the Coastal Commission.
Okay. Is that the end of the staff report?
Yeah, that would end our presentation.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for public testimony. I don't see anybody coming forward. Do we have any speaker slips or any written correspondence? Okay, we'll close public testimony, bring it back to the commission for questions and comments. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. Just to be clear a little bit, on the restoration areas, are any of those areas within the primary coastal commission approval zone or just the cities?
I'm sorry, Chair Thompson, Commissioner Campanella, I should have made that a little more clear, that part of the recommendation, again, includes all the areas that are within their jurisdiction. If I come back, what I should have made a little more clear, if we come back to our map that shows the restoration area, you can see it's almost entirely within the original, excuse me, the original permit jurisdiction. There's a slight amount of it that's within the city's jurisdiction. So yes, your recommendation would be including the restoration area as part of your comments to the Coastal Commission for the project, not just for the work that was described around the tide gates. It would be as well for this area as well.
Okay. And then is there indication relative to what the Coastal Commission would want to see or do or conditions that they would put on this that, do you feel you're complying with in perspective of what they're going to want by your restoration plan?
Well, we are building off of the previously approved restoration plans for the Cabrillo Bridge project in the Mission Creek using a similar planting scheme. And should have put a little more information in the presentation, too, as well as part of the permitting process includes the requirement for a stream bed alteration agreement with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, as I refer to today. And that in itself will have additional layers of conditions. We did preconsult with that agency to make sure that our conditions for the ratio of restoration, the area, was consistent with what they were going to have in their conditions, so we didn't have competing conditions. So we have had, again, consultation. So as far as having the, but back to your question, as far as the Coastal Commission, they have not received the application yet. Part of what it would be is looking at our approval and then the recommendation for the, both the restoration plan and the improvements of the tide gate, and then the attached information we have, the biological studies and surveys as well. We're assuming they'll be in support of it. Again, it's an extension of an existing project. It's removing invasive species. We have ice plant that we don't want there, and it's a beneficial component of the project, consistent with the policies, again.
So there's been a lot of foresight put into it. When we, when it does go to Coastal Commission, you've contemplated a lot of those conditions.
Yes, we've, Public Works has done a lot of work ahead of time with the other agencies' Water Quality Control Board, Army Corps of Engineer. Planning staff has consulted with the coastal development permit process, regarding the permit process, with the Coastal Commission on this particular project, and received early direction on how to move forward with the project from the Coastal Commission, from their area purview.
Okay. Well, my last question is, what about upstream? Is there a program for maintenance of overgrowth upstream and that's either underway or planned before the next rainy season, which possibly could also impact what's happening at your flood gauge?
The restoration flood control measures that are, that occur in the upper areas of Laguna Channel, say above the railroad area, adjacent to the wastewater treatment plant, that has in the past been under a different permit. We are working now with, Streets Division is actually responsible for the flood control measures, removal of debris in that section of the channel. We are working with them to have a new permit applied for. There was a 10-year life on that particular permit, which has expired. So different project, we are working towards that. It was last year, the last, actually, two years ago, into the last year of that agreement, there was maintenance that occurred. But, so to answer your question, this project doesn't include that, but we are working with Streets to move forward with a new permit to allow that maintenance.
So I don't know how it affects you, but you're anticipating that that work gets done or taken care of. It's not going to have an impact on you downstream?
Shouldn't, no, there would not be an impact to this area. This project would not impact that project and vice versa.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You referred to the work that needs to be done on Tide Gate 3. Is it correct to assume that once it's dewatered, you're going to really be taking a careful look at one and two to make sure that they don't need any work? Or are you confident that they don't need work at this point?
I will let Brian DeMore to speak to that, since he's the project engineer. I would make that assumption, but I'll let him speak in more detail.
So that's correct. Right now, we know that Tide Gate 3 is not operational. It's been, the last time it was used, there was much difficulty in getting it to close. And the problem with the way these tide gates close, because they seal on the bottom, if it doesn't seal, the lagoon will constantly drain back through into the channel. So the operators down there, knowing that, they're afraid to ever open it, knowing it may not close. So when we have the bladder set up out there so that we can de-water in front of the tide gate, we will also, at that time, exercise and grease everything we need to do on number one and two to get the operators comfortable that everything is operational. So when we have a storm and when we need to open it, they will have the confidence to go ahead and do that, knowing it will close.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pujol?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions on a clearly needed project. The first is on our action today. So I'm clear on the approval for the coastal development permit that's within our jurisdiction. For the original jurisdiction, I understand the system, but I, but this is the part that I'm not clear about. I've seen a couple of terms used in the report and the presentation. One is that we're making a recommendation, and another says support, and I think I also heard comments. So aren't we making a recommendation for approval to the Coastal Commission?
We're requesting a comment that is a recommendation to support the project.
That's complex.
The requirement, the requirement technically is that for the Coastal Commission to process the coastal development permit that's within their jurisdiction, it requires the local jurisdiction to recommend, make a recommendation to the Coastal Commission in support of the project.
A recommendation in support, then, is the actual, okay, all right. And then the other question I had really has to do with probably existing and maintenance of existing, probably pedestrian, but maybe it could also be other, like bicycle or rollerblade or something along there. But when you go along Cabrillo Boulevard, I don't think you can traverse the facility now. now. You have to go up to the right-of-way of Cabrillo, is that right? How do you get across? If you're, if you're on the beach on the west side, how do you get to the beach on the east side of the facility?
It would be the existing beachway bridge that crosses the channel, where the demarcation is between the boundaries. It's a, if we look in the picture, to the right corner of the, the view, we can see the channel. And if we follow the, on the lower edge of the parking lot, the pathway, that pathway just follows across the, the bridge.
I see, I see, okay. And, and so that one, it, in not need of any sort of repair, upgrade, and it's not going to be, except for during the construction time period, it's not going to be affected, is that right?
Yeah, and the, the impact during construction will be very limited. It will only be for, you know, gosh, a few minutes or so to allow a flagman to direct up the equipment to get over in front of the, the tide gate area. So there is no proposal to shut it down for a day or any extended period of time.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Campanella?
Yes, thank you. On the, just a little bit of understanding on the Exhibit A, conditions of approval, B1, on the approved development. This may be repeated, you know, every time we get a condition of approval, but it was a little different language in the, the one we received on the bathhouse. That just wants me to ask the question, the second line from the bottom, which says of, on approved development, goes, and the related improvements shown on the plan signed by the chairman, which is pretty standard language, I think. But is that referring only to the physical improvements that are being done, or does that refer to everything that preceded it? The reason I'm asking is you have certain approval authorities to go through yet, and so do you feel that you have enough flexibility? Let's say it's a four-to-one ratio, where different areas are selected, that you would have to come back to us? Or is there some level of significant change that would allow it to go forward without having to come back to us?
That consideration was given at the time of the preparation of the conditions. And at one time, we had considered utilizing some of the draft conditions that the fishing game had supplied, but because of the concerns that you've just indicated, that they may change, what we did want to nail down was that ratio for restoration. So the key part, that we believe to make sure was going to be consistent, was that three-to-one ratio. What will, what you will see, what you would see in the stream bed alteration agreements are more detailed as far as the, the process and protections that they want to see, regardless of the conditions that we've placed on the project. They have their additional layers that are, are required regardless of the, of the project scope. But those, those conditions, again, after reviewing those during the preconsultation, we do not believe there'll be any conflict or any concerns that would create an issue of needing to come back to commission for amendment to. Should, though, point out, and I was negligent in pointing out on a different, a different point, the review board, the HLC, has reviewed the, the project. They did request that a change was made to the debris rack to have it a vinyl-covered fence, black-covered. And they did request some modifications to the planting scheme on the restoration plan. And Public Works has indicated they feel that they can work with those recommendations. So those are also, again, with negligence, I'm presenting it in the presentation, but the project will be going back to HLC for their final approval with, with the recommendations from the, the planning commission on the project.
Okay, well, thank you for that background.
Okay, comments? Anyone want to start with comments? Well, I will. I'll follow up on Commissioner Lodge's question, and I had the same question. If you're going through such an onerous process as this process to get a permit to inspect tide gate three, I would strongly recommend that going forward, all your documentation also includes verbiage saying inspect and repair is necessary, tide gates one and two. So you don't have to go back through this process with getting two coastal development permits and, and the additional time and expense this costs the city. In reading through the report, I get the impression that maintenance in the channel bottom over the concrete channel was deferred for many years due to budgetary considerations. And I guess the penalty for that is that we now have allowed something that some agency in the state considers to be a wetlands, and now we have to go through the mitigation process, whereas we kept it clear, we wouldn't be going through a mitigation process, and we wouldn't have to worry about the flood control channel blocking up. This, this process also points out the absurdity of things in California, where we have to have two coastal development permits for the same project, which should be just the maintenance of an existing necessary public infrastructure that prevents flooding and damage to property and, and people, yet we have to go through and get two separate coastal development permits and get the State Department of Fish and Wildlife weighing in on this just for maintenance of an existing infrastructure. And that's absurd. The cost to the public is absurd. Obviously, I'm going to support it. And obviously, I would strongly support the recommendation to the California Coastal Commission. And I hope that when we redo our local coastal plan, we could rectify some of these issues like this to where we don't have bifurcated areas of responsibility. Anybody else? Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I concur with your, your comments about, about this. It is unfortunate that it has gotten to this complicated a stage, but obviously, the work needs to be done. And so I'm ready to make a motion to concur with the staff recommendation. Should I go ahead?
Okay.
And approve the coastal development permit and recommend to the California Coastal Commission approval of the interior mechanical repairs to tide gate three. And I think it would be important to include some language there about checking out one and two. Replacement of the storm drain outlet, outflow cover, sedimentation, vegetation removal, and implementation of the restoration plan.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
Second.
Can we have a motion in second? Commissioner Pujol.
Yeah, I have a question to the, to the motion. It's a very interesting idea, and makes some practical sense to me, this concept that some of my fellow commissioners have mentioned about potentially adding reference to tide gates two and three. My question is, are we okay in at this point? Can we add reference to those? Is it a workable idea? And then would your mitigation plan and all, do you think that would have to be redone? I mean, if it's a simple matter, and I guess I'm looking to Mr. Vincent a bit, too, if it's a simple matter of adding reference to those so that those repairs can be done, if you find necessary, you know, partway through, and it would mean not having to kind of loop back and do this again, I think that sounds like a really valid idea.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I would ask Mr. DeMore, what would the work for gates one and two entail?
Yeah, so to do the repairs on tide gate three, we're going to have to de-water the area in front of that tide gate. So everything will be dry. You'll have to do all the environmental to, to address the issues with number three. So with one and two, what we would do is basically just turn the crank, open it and close it, and see that it's working. If, if it's not working, or if it needs to be greased, or whatever it is, we could address it at that time. That would be definitely the time to do it, rather than wait for an event and open the gate and then find out that it's not working. So absolutely, that'd be the right time to troubleshoot if there are any issues.
Would there be any, any possibility that there's going to be a structural alteration to the gate? Or is it just simply a matter of making sure that the existing gate mechanics are functioning properly and, and you're not going to rebuild the gates?
Correct. It would just be a mechanical thing.
Mr. Chair members of the commission, with that explanation, I don't see that it would change anything regarding the, the mitigations. The mitigations are actually tied to the removal of the material that has, you know, sediment and the vegetation that's occurred within the channel. The gate itself, the structure's not changing, except for the couple of things that are being altered and described in the project description. So I would say amending the project description to include maintenance of gates one and two, as well as three, does not change the scope of the project.
And if I could address the motion maker in the second, is that the intent with your suggestions? Would it include the language kind of framed by Mr. Vincent? Okay, okay, then I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would follow up on that. As long as you have to scrape out all the tide water guppies and put a cofferdam and dry out the, the channel, why do it again? You know, go through all that environmental stuff, and if you had to do it again, you'd have to go back through this whole onerous process again, so why not do it once? And if you find that there's something wrong, that's the time to fix it. Just makes sense. But if it's only referencing number three, then sure as heck, somebody down the line is going to raise an issue if you find something wrong and need a repair number one. So why not put one, two, and three in there? They're all in the same building, they're all in the same structure, they're all in the same channel, so do them all at one time. Okay, any other comments? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Or any opposed? None opposed. So you have a project and clear to go to the California Coastal Commission, and good luck getting on their agenda. Okay, finally, we have our administrative agenda. I don't believe we have a staff hearing officer liaison report today. Do we have any other committee and liaison reports? Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I attended a site visit and joint hearing of the Creeks Advisory Committee or Division and the Parks Commission yesterday at the property formerly known as the, help me with that, the property on, at the end of Allen Road, previously developed by, or attempted developed by Mark Lee. Somebody help me with the name of that project?
Veronica Meadows?
Veronica Meadows, thank you. So this is a project to acquire the property from the developer with funding by the Creeks Division. There's a partnership in the works with Trust for Public Lands, and they've raised thirty, thirty, forty percent of the funding for the acquisition, and the Creeks Division is being asked to, or they'll ask the council to allocate the rest from their budget for the acquisition of the property for the purpose of main creek restoration on the property. So it would take any development opportunity off the table officially if that acquisition is successful, and they've got another, well, from what I understand, another two or three months in due diligence before they have to exercise the option.
Is there a plan to acquire the entire property and then turn it over to the city as a park?
Correct.
And the city?
Passive. The primary use would be for creek restoration, and whether or not other active uses could be consistent with those creek restoration programs, yet to be seen, but it, it won't be an active park.
Okay. Any other reports? Okay, that completes our meeting, and the meeting, the planning commission meeting is adjourned.